Um, so how many more are we waiting for? I think we have. One, two, three commissioners?
You need one more.
One more?
Mm hmm.
All right. Laura is in the waiting room and Nisa. Okay, I've let them in. So I think we might have a quorum now.
Yes.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, who are we waiting for?
Ranu, uh, who's missing?
So, Vaishen, Delagnew is here. Commissioner Humayan is here. Commissioner Klein is here. Commissioner Liu is here. Chair Texler is here. Commissioner Regan is here. Commissioner Wan. So she's waiting, I mean, I have to admit her.
Oh, there we go. Oh, Nisa said she will call back. She's having some connection issues. Okay. All right.
Okay, thank you. So we've established quorum. Um, and we, we, we usually do roll call. We have to do roll call. So go ahead and, sorry, now you have to go ahead and call roll and we'll announce whether we're present or not.
Okay, Vaishen Delagnew?
Present.
Commissioner Humayan?
Present.
Commissioner Klein?
Present.
Commissioner Liu?
Present.
Chair Texler?
Here.
Commissioner Regan?
Here.
Commissioner Wan? Commissioner Wan? Uh, so let that I could show that Commissioners, uh, Delagnew, Humayan, Klein, Liu, Texler, Regan are present. Commissioner Wan is absent.
Um. So Lei is here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear that she was present. So all Commissioners are present.
Thank you. So we can go ahead and get started. Um, so we have our approval, our minutes of our January 10th meeting. There are no, uh, changes to that. We have a motion for approval.
I move to approve the minutes from the January 10th meeting.
Yes. Thank you, Rashina. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. I think, is that Lei or Xiaoping? Sorry.
Xiaoping.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favor? I raise your hand. Thank you. So our minutes are approved. Um, and we can jump right into our, um, informational items. We did want to, uh, give an update on, um, what we are affectionately calling Reach Codes 2.0. Um, so, uh, in 2023 will be the new building code cycle. And so, uh, because we have, we have a reach code, if we do not, um, either renew or replace that, um, the time the new building code goes into effect, we will, uh, for intents and purposes have a lapse in, um, in the electrification and, and EV, um, uh, you know, uh, requirements that we have put in, um, uh, in our last reach code effort. So, um, the subcommittee has begun, um, talking about preparing for that. Um, and again, we would, the council would need to adopt that, uh, prior to, uh, the 2023. So we have, we have not a lot of time to work on this. Um, we, uh, Dawn and I have began speaking with, um, SVCE, uh, which will again be coordinating the regional effort, uh, you know, for our region, um, in terms of the same kind of technical assistance, um, that they provided, um, in the past Reach Code cycle, including, um, the cost benefit. I assume it's going to, still going to be a, um, cost effectiveness study, as well as, um, sample reach codes and the like. So we've just started to have a conversation with them about, um, you know, um, what that will entail, what the timeframe is, and what types of, uh, 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 reach codes we'll be, um, considering. Um, so. And, oh, and, um, it's also on the council's radar, um, that this is something that will be, bringing to them, um, or hopefully will be, um, bringing for their consideration. Um, so, you know, once again, we're going to be doing quite a bit of work on this. Um, and as you recall, last time we did a lot of community outreach, um, we have to put some thought into, um, how much, um, community outreach will be required for this round. Of course, that probably will depend a little bit on, um, what measures we're looking to include. Um, if you recall, our current Reach Code is for, for new construction only. Um, and building electrification with the exception of what we called comfort appliances, which is cooking, and, you know, uh, fireplaces, that kind of thing. So initial discussion is perhaps including, um, a Reach Code that encompasses a remodel element, so that would be triggered by a remodel element, and what the definition of significant remodel might be. Um, if there's any changes to, you know, EV charging requirements, um, particularly in multifamily homes. Um, and here's where I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on you, Dawn, to, to chime in on anything else I'm, I'm missing. Um, then we've had kind of broader discussions with SVC as well in terms of like what some other municipalities have looked at beyond, um, Reach Code, including burnout ordinances or end of flow ordinances. But, um, that's a, a bit of a separate process than, than the Reach Code. So, um, I think I will turn over you, Dawn, to see if you have anything else to add.
I think you covered it well, Laura. Um, those are the remaining, I, we, we really have to start as a subcommittee and then perhaps bring back to the next, uh, meeting of the commission, the entire commission, some initial ideas on, uh, what type, what type of actions we may want to take. And, uh, so, uh, so I, it's, we're very preliminary discussions and then I think, uh, bring it back to the commission with some initial ideas.
Can I ask a question? Sorry. Um, hi. Uh, just, are you working with the chief building official? Um, I know right now, obviously, uh, we have an acting chief building official, Veronica Tameko, and I, you know, I'm not sure at what point, you know, you would bring her into it or sooner rather than later, or?
So this is one of our questions, um, is, you know, what, who, if anybody at this point, given that we don't have a sustainability coordinator, um, when and where do we involve staff? And so we need direction on that, um, for sure. It was something, you know, I don't know if, uh, Councilmember Flygar can illuminate it all, but yes, we do need to know, uh, from somebody on staff, who is, who's going to be, um, hopefully assigned to, to work on this or a part of working on this.
Sure, I would say, um, oh, go ahead.
I think part of our process was to come forward with at least some initial ideas even before bringing it back to the environmental commission, and then have that discussion, uh, with, uh, surrounding initial ideas even before they start getting discussed.
Okay.
So, uh, what I'm saying is the subcommittee come up with some initial ideas, discuss that with staff, and then hopefully that would be before the next commission meeting where we present some ideas for more robust discussion.
Okay, I would just suggest that, um, you know, within the development services or the community development department is the, um, the building division, and I would suggest that you invite, of course, Ranu, who's the sustainability coordinator at this point, and also, uh, Veronica as the acting chief building official. If you, you know, if you need staff to work with, I think they're the appropriate contacts.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. And, you know, of course, this is, is going to be, um, you know, feeding into the, uh, cap work as well. So, um, you, I, you know, we're not asking really, um, for anything in particular at this point, but just to, to make sure everyone knows is on the radar. Bruno, did you have some input?
Yeah, no, I have a couple of questions maybe. Um, so I'm, I'm assuming once again that the Reach Codes will just be the energy codes, right, for new housing, for new housing and potential remodels. We're not touching, we're not going into this, uh, any discussion around building codes, what materials to use and all that stuff, including insulation and roofing.
So I actually have a little bit of the same question too, you know, i- i- the green building and expanding into more areas of the green building code. Um, and my understanding is if we were to do that, that wouldn't be, um, we wouldn't get, be getting support, technical resource from SVC on that piece of it. So I'm not sure, um, how we would tackle that. But Dawn, do you have more information?
No, I think, I think you're right, uh, Laura. It's, it's, um, it's a matter of, you can only do certain things within the energy code and the Reach Code, and then other things have to be done outside of it. And so that's where these, I, what I'd say, these preliminary ideas, uh, we have to bring forward to see, you know, what's realistic before we start discussing them. Um, but certainly Laura and I, as the subcommittee, and David's on the subcommittee as well, um, we could, uh, you know, get your input, inputs and ideas in that formulation that we're going to have before the next meeting.
Right, and the, the, the other way to, to tackle, if there's a, you know, a specific, um, item that we're trying to get at, like, you know, we have a deconstruction, uh, you know, um, uh, waste ordinance, right? So the city can adopt an ordinance that, you know, just looks at, you know, how much, uh, what, how people process their, um, C and D waste. And you can, you know, address that in an ordinance as opposed to through the building code.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just asking because it might be a sec, a different process. That's, that's, uh, I think there is the, we have the Reach Codes, which is one thing, which is dealing with energy codes, right, for the new cycle. And then maybe my question is, do we need to start thinking about having, uh, a discussion and technical discussions around, um, maybe revising the city's building codes for, for new multifamily and single family homes? At some point, I'm not just saying this year, but I think that's probably something we would want to do, and I think that would be some, I mean, that's something that came out of the cap, um, obviously, and that some, have some ordinances or guidelines with regards to insulation, with regards to roofing, with regards to what kind of materials to use, like green materials to use in new housing and that kind of stuff. And we, we haven't even to, talked about, or could, you know, another ordinance about, um, deconstruction versus demolition and so on. So I think that's probably a different topic, but I think that's one we need to have on the radar and probably we should tackle sooner rather than later.
Right.
And it is deconstruction.
One thing to say though is that with the new green building code, which comes out 2023, s- some of those things may be incorporated. So the first step, I think, would be to see what, what, um, additional requirements do they have in the green building code for material selection and all those other things? Um, and then based on that, is there something we want to go beyond in a city code? If that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I think the other question, going back now to the energy codes and what you guys are working on is how far can we go? How do we want to go? Understanding that the last Reach Codes were kind of difficult to get through. It went through, but was rather difficult and some people remember and still don't like them, but for one reason or another. I think the real question for you guys is going to be, you know, how far do you want to take it this time around? Understanding that we go through that process every three years, so we may just want to go slowly, incrementally, actually.
Rashina, did you have something to add as well?
Yeah, so I guess my question was, uh, related to, uh, some of the things that Bruno was, uh, was mentioning. Is that what, and maybe if you step back and explain to us, what exactly is the scope of the Reach Codes around energies? Is it only energy as in the energy used to run a building? Does it also cover, um, energy efficiency? Does it also cover, um, wha- what is its overall scope? And then, yeah, what do we do for, with all the other, uh, items that were in the cap? Um, and how do we bring them in, uh, I guess, phased by, you know, in a phase, in a phased manner into the building codes, into whatever, um, ordinances that we need to bring in?
Right, so the, the green building code, um, does, and, and does encompass, in the Title 24, does encompass energy efficiency and all, in a whole host of things. I mean, requirement to have solar panels and all these things. I think the question is if there are other areas, we would want to go beyond what California state standard is. And again, I, I'm not totally sure about what the process would be to do that above and beyond, um, the, you know, electrification subset that is supported by the work that regionally. So, um, I think Councilmember Flygar has something to add. Nisa, if you want to.
Just maybe, uh, question again as to what exactly does the Reach Code? Is it only energy use, uh, as in coming in energy use, or is it also?
The, what we are focusing on, it's, it's, um, I guess, energy use, it's electrification standards, basically, and EV charging standards. So what, you know, what, what elect, what appliances? The fuel for the appliances are, you know, and EV charging capabilities.
I'll, I'll add one, one additional comment, and that is, you have to remember that, uh, the Title 24 and building codes deal with new construction. So it's, um, it's new buildings, and, uh, by definition, you can add, you know, by defining a remodel in some way, you can make that remodel also new construction, you know, if it's a certain percentage or whatever. In our current one, it's a scrape and rebuild. Um, but that can be modified a little bit. But if you want to get into ex, energy and within existing buildings, then that's a different avenue, and those would be different municipal ordinances.
Thanks. Councilmember Flygar, please.
Thank you, Chair Texler. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Great. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you all. You can't see me. And so I just wanted to add, and this is a great discussion, um, to underscore, um, the fact that we do not have a formal sustainability coordinator, as Laura mentioned. And so to Bruno's question about, um, the scope of our Reach Codes going into materials, for example, I would recommend, and I'm going to wear my SVCE hat since I'm on that board as well, um, because they do have staff support, um, that they're willing to work with the different city staff and commissions and councils. And I know that from the last time and also for Reach Codes 2.0, it's almost as if you have, just to Rashina's point, a menu of options or a suite of options, and there are different ways we can do Reach Code 2.0. And it just depends on what we want to do as a city, what we think the community will embrace, what we think we need to do in order to have that impact. And so if the commission decides tonight to form a subcommittee, then I would encourage that subcommittee, and I know Laura and maybe Dawn, um, has already reached out to SVC or maybe met with them, but they can go through these many options, um, that we can consider about what we think is right for Los Altos this year for Reach Codes 2.0. But I would really encourage you to stay within that scope, um, because we have limited resources in-house, as you know, and at least we have SVCE available to help if we stay within that scope.
Thank you. Yeah, that's my understanding as well. Okay, um, and just to clarify, we do have a, a subcommittee consisting of myself, uh, Commissioner Regan and Commissioner Klein. So we do have that already, already formed.
Great. And then, and then still on the Reach Codes, at the end of the last council meeting, I actually proposed adding as a future agenda item, discussion by council of the Reach Codes. And so I will look to the subcommittee for direction on whether or not you want council to have a discussion before you're ready to present something. I, um, I will talk offline as the council ladies on, just to better understand the timing of when we should actually get something on the council agenda. But I, I did get support, um, from council members to put it on the agenda.
That's great. Um, and, and I thank Dawn for laying out the timeline during the council meeting, which I think was very helpful to, um, point out that there isn't, um, a, a huge amount of time to get this in front of council. Um, I do think it will be helpful to have, uh, for the commission to at least have, uh, initial direction, you know, or at least have worked on this substantially before it comes to council. Otherwise, I'm not sure what, um, you know, what productive discussion could be had.
Sounds good, Laura. Thank you. And thanks, Dawn.
Okay, I think we can move on.
Oh, um, Vaishen Delagnew has his hand up.
Oh, was that from?
No, no, that's, that's a new one. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry to make it a bit longer than, than you probably would want, uh, to, to do, but anyway. Um, so I think one of the, the other points I wanted to make is that, and then you alluded to that a little bit at the beginning, Laura, is, you know, the, the outreach will be very important again for, for those. And I realize we don't have much time because I think the target is to go to the council around September, October with a recommendation. But, um, understanding, um, how challenging it's been last time, it's likely to be, uh, even more challenging this time, especially if we include remodels. I think it's going to be critical, and I know it's a lot of work for you, but it's going to be critical, especially without a staff person, but it's going to be critical to do outreach as we go as much as possible, because otherwise it's, uh, and it's also some, also something that the council had asked last time to have more outreach. So I think that's something to, uh, keep in mind and, and, um, take into consideration as you move forward with this.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I guess maybe I'm naive and hoping that it's, it's going to be, because the basics of it are understood and we'll just be, likely just be expanding the scope in some way that it won't be as much outreach, but maybe that's, uh, you know, naivete or hopeful thinking, wishful thinking. Um, okay. We can move on, I think. So we have, um, a cap status update, and, you know, I think we need to give a huge round of applause and celebratory yay, um, to the subcommittee. Um, it, and I, I don't want to steal your thunder in, 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 um, announcing that the, uh, council, um, did approve the cap at the last meeting. Um, it, it needs to still go through second re- reading. Is that correct? I'm not sure, but anyway.
No, it was.
I don't think so. It, it's been approved by the council, so I believe it's city policy now.
Okay, so yay, we have a cap. That's, that's wonderful. But as I think, uh, Bruno has said, now the, the real work begins. So I'll, I'll turn over to you, Bruno.
Thank you. Um, no, I, I, I would say that's, that was a lot of work from, uh, the subcommittee, from Emiko, also, uh, for the most, like, ninety-five percent of the time. Um, it's a lot of work, obviously, from the staff, um, and the consultants. So I think it's, we, we, we're glad that, um, the council approved the plan. And, uh, now, you know, as, uh, I had mentioned to Laura, um, you know, the, the, the real work starts in some ways. We have to be in the position to have the right setup at the, uh, at the level of the environmental commission to be able to move the plan forward. Um, there are a lot of actions in the plan, sixty-eight, um, forty-one mitigation, and the rest are cross cutting or adaptation actions. So obviously, there is a lot to do. We have until 2035, so we still have plenty of time. But definitely there are some actions that will need to be tackled early on to be able to meet the target. Um, and, uh, you know, there are some big commitments in the plan, so, uh, that will require a lot of work. So I, I, I think, you know, what maybe we can start thinking about as a, as a commission is start to divi- divide, um, in some ways the work, um, and, and start putting to get, together some committees and some task force to be able to move forward. So as, as part of the, the presentation to the council, actually, we had put a list of actions that we could potentially tackle in 2022. It doesn't mean that, yeah, all the actions that were listed, uh, should be tackled in 2022, but I think that's a good start for us to start thinking about, how do we want to do that? Um, and how do we want to assign the work? And some of these actions actually are more staff-related actions. Um, and, and without, uh, a full-time liaison, maybe it's a little bit more challenging for us to have that discussion with the staff on some of these staff actions. Um, but I think we, we should really start, uh, the planning process. And then I can go through the, the proposed actions if you want. I don't have a slide to show you, but I can just read from the slides that were shown at the council, um, and some of the ones that we had suggested as a team. Um, the, the, the one, and all of these action, I should also add, uh, low-budget actions. Um, so that's one of the reasons also we moved them forward, uh, for 2022, because we understand the challenges, the budget challenges that the city is facing right now because of COVID and other things. Um, but anyway, just going through the list, um, the development of a yearly EV fair program. Uh, the idea there is to try to educate the community and try to, um, help the community ma- make the decision and make the switch to EV cars. Uh, so the idea, the original idea, and I think it's in the cap, um, would be to have an EV fair once a year, um, which could be around the community center, the parking lot and inside. And it could be the participation of local EV owners in Los Altos. And it could be the participation of local EV owners in Los Altos and also local dealers potentially. So that's something that we could start this year for maybe the first EV fair being set up for 2023, not necessarily 2022. And I think the question for that would be, can we partner with the community or some organization within the community? So Greentown, Los Altos would be the obvious one, because I think they just put one together at the Los Altos High School a few weeks ago. It was only with local EV owners. It's a little bit less than what we were planning, because we were planning to add local dealership. But that would be one action for discussion. How do we do it? The second one would be to tackle the issue of off-road fossil fuels, fossil fuel engines. And how do we, how do we put together ordinance to phase out off-road fossil fuel engines? So we mean, you know, a bit of the gas leak blows and the land mowers and all the other gardening equipment. Mostly, that's what we're talking about. We.
That's accelerating it above and beyond the timeline that the new, because the new sewer equipment is, is electrified, but to accelerate the timeline for replacement.
Yeah, potentially. I think we, we know, again, how challenging it's been with the gas leak blowers, because we technically have banned them in Los Altos. We still have them. So it's not, it's not an easy, an easy one, because it goes beyond just the gas leak blowers. It's really changing the complete equipment park of all the gardeners that operate in Los Altos, not just, you know, what people have in their tool shed in the back of their garden. But so I think that's, that's one that probably will take a little bit of time, and not just, I don't think we can say we can do that all in 2022. But another, another one that was listed. The other one was residential and commercial energy audits, a support tool that we could set up and maybe put as a webpage to help the community figure out how to get their energy audit. So that's another one that will probably require some staff help. But one that was listed in the actions that we suggested for 2022. One big question mark, and I know there were a lot of questions during the study session in November about this action, which is to establish a gas user fee to try to incentivize the use of methane gas, methane gas actually in houses. And then what we ended up doing in, or recommending in the cap after the study session specifically is to set up a task force, the city task force to work on that. So that would not be, I think, just an environmental commission. Task force, it would be one that would be inclusive. Probably members of the community, maybe obviously staff, maybe one or two council members. Things, this, this is something that we need to discuss because obviously it's, you know, it has to do with a fee. So I think there are several benefits. Obviously, the main one will be that we could potentially, on a yearly basis, through this, raise half a million dollars, maybe even more, which would help us finance other incentives for switching appliances from gas to electric. Or do other green programs in Los Altos. So especially considering the issues around the budget, I think that would be one that we may want to start as soon as possible. We have the single-use plastics ban also, which we have a subcommittee, and I know the question is whether we want to restart that, whether the council would like us to restart that now that COVID seems to be more on the back burner, would be less of an issue maybe with the local restaurants and, and so on. And then there are a couple of action items which are really staff-directed action items. And I'm not sure how we would deal with that. One is doing energy efficiency audits in city buildings, establish a policy to facilitate alternative work schedule or telecommuting options for city staff. The idea is to reduce vehicle miles traveled for this, for city staff. The zero waste policy for city facilities and city-sponsored events. So these are really more like city staff type of actions, policies. And then the, the last one would be to integrate the cap goals into city projects, and that would be driven by staff and probably the city manager as well. Now, if I continue, there are a few more that we had listed banning the use of non-organic pesticides and herbicides in the city of Los Altos or by the city of Los Altos. That's more specifically. Talk about the Reach Codes, obviously, that's set up right now. And then have a discussion around the yearly or year-round farmers market, which obviously the farmers market, market is organized by LAVA. So is that staff contacting LAVA to see what's doable, what, are there any budget implications? Do we need to get involved? I don't know. These are some of the actions that were listed, just putting that out for us to think about, start thinking about it and how we go about that, if that's what we want to do. And I don't know if Dawn and Rashina have more to add to just to what I just said.
No, I think going back and visiting that list that was presented in the presentation makes a lot of sense. And I would say, Laura, I don't know if the, the starting point of this is, again, that's the discussion with what may be realistic to tackle for the, you know, the next, this, the rest of this fiscal year. And that obviously between our, you know, our liaison and, and city staff.
Yeah, I, I almost feel in listening to you go through that list, Bruno, that almost the first thing we need to do is, even though this is a short list, compared to what's in the cap, is to first have a discussion on how to approach each one of these and and maybe, I'm almost thinking, imagining a table of, you know, who's, who's responsible for it, you know, obviously, some of the more staff-driven things, you know, would kind of be in a, in a separate bucket. But in, in a lot of the actions that we're considering, what I don't want for us to try and do is reinvent the wheel. And things like energy audits, home energy audits, EV fairs, there's a lot of information in already out there. You know, there are organizations, Greentown, Actera, that already do these things. And given our limited resources plugging into those, I'm not saying just to say, hey, you know, we have a website and, oh, go look at this. You know, this resource, but somehow connecting our residents and businesses to what's existing as opposed to us trying to recreate something with limited resources. And I think the other thing that I would, would initially respond, react to is given the budgetary needs of the cap, is there some work we might want to be doing in terms of, you know, even starting as a commission to resource, to research what grant money and funding is out there that the committee, the city could then jump on to take advantage of to start implementing some of the cap actions. So anyway, those are just some of my initial thoughts. I, I'm not sure that we can prioritize any of these in a commission setting. So I, I'm feeling like we need to have a subcommittee discuss this a little bit and come back with some sort of approach. But that's just my initial thought. I think we have some. I think councilmember Flybar maybe and Laura Simpson would wanted to chime in on some.
Yes, I would. I was just going to say that I think it would be good if maybe Laura, yourself and/or whether it's a subcommittee and you talk to Renu and kind of see what you're interested in pursuing. And then I think Renu can see, based on her time that she's allocated toward the committee, what she can help on. There might be some city initiatives that she could help on. So you can, you know, coordinate with her and talk through, you know, what, what you might need from city staff. But I also wanted to mention, there is a member of the public that joined us, and they may want to speak on this topic of the, the climate action plan or, or another topic. So we might want to pause for a minute and let, you know, and see if they're here to speak.
Okay, yes. Do we have, I did notice there was a new phone number that joined us. So I didn't ask for comments beforehand because I didn't see any members of the public. So if the person who's joined us wishes to speak either, well, I guess on the, on the, I think it's on the cap action, go ahead and do so. Maybe just somebody listening in.
Hey, this is David Klein. I'm, I'm on video and on cell for audio reasons. So I'm sorry. You're probably talking about me.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Called out, I should have called out the last four digits. So yes, yeah, okay, no problem. Okay. Yeah. So actually, this, I did have a clarifying question. So Renu, I thought my understanding is that you're a contractor, right? So I, I don't know, you know, what the scope of your, you know, city is, but.
My scope of work is to serve as the sustainability coordinator while I'm on contract with the city until the city finds a permanent staff member. So I will be taking on the role that AMICO performed. It is just that it takes a little while to ramp up. And that's why when you do have your subcommittee meetings, whether it is on the Reach Codes or on CAP, in terms of understanding what your priorities are and kind of give you some staff suggestion, I would be the person to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. Councilmember Flygor.
Thank you, Chair. And David, if you're hearing us, I think you may need to go on mute on your phone. I think since you joined, maybe it's just me, I was hearing like an echo sound. Just two, well, three things based on the discussion. One, Bruno, I would encourage you, and I think you mentioned it as well, as to the single-use plastic ordinance and also for the farmers market, to talk with LAVA and the president of the chamber, Kim Mosley, for the very reasons you mentioned, which is we know the business community objected to us moving forward at the ordinance in 2020, and that's why it got put on hold. And so it'd be good for the subcommittee to talk to Kim Mosley, president of chamber, and LAVA, just to get their feedback and thoughts on the city moving forward now with that ordinance. And then the same thing with the farmers market. One, one concern raised by a council member, and I just want to flag it for you. And it's a good concern, which is we do have some stores on State Street that I know get impacted when we close off the streets from the farmers market. And I know Scott at LAVA normally works with them, but that's another reason why when you talk with Scott, you know, and we're trying to, and you're trying to determine whether or not you should propose a year-round farmers market, it'd be good to understand how the business community feels about having a, the business community that would be directly impacted feels about having that year-round farmers market on State. And then the last thing I'll just quickly mention and echo what Laura and Renu said, which is, you know, on the one hand, the goals for this year sound like low-hanging fruits, but on the other hand, you know, it really will depend on the resource demand. And so I just encourage the subcommittees working on these different things. They're all great, and I agree, not all of them will require a lot. But just to keep that in mind, you know, let's have realistic goals for this year so we can accomplish as much as we can and, and, and do good for the city. So that's it. Thank you. And Laura, I liked your idea of also looking for grant opportunities also this year. That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. And just to let you know, I have, I have reached out to Kim regarding the single-use plastics and so having that discussion. So hopefully we'll have report back on that next meeting. So I'm I, I do feel like forming a subcommittee, or maybe it's a subcommittee of the same sub, cap some committee, although it might be nice to have some, some new input to talk about how to approach starting some of these items would be helpful, just in my view.
So I think it's a good idea. I think we can, that could be something that the CAP subcommittee could, could start thinking about and maybe come back to the, the commission with some ideas on how to do it and what we believe could be done this year out of all these actions, obviously.
Okay, that would be great. And again, I would really encourage you before you start planning an EV fair or, or home energy audits or something like that, to think about what resources that are there that we can tap into and partner with to expand our impact. Rashina.
So I just wanted to add, well, I guess one clarifying question is that we, we continue to meet as a subcommittee, right? I think we were, I don't know what our charter was, if it, hopefully it didn't end with the adoption of the plan. So we would continue to meet and then maybe we bring back some specific proposals, you know, and steps to implement it. And then the other thing, I think, we do have a short list. I know it feels long, but it's, you know, a little bit short of things that we want to, or we think could be accomplished or at least started in 2022. But we also have also not that, that long, a, a list of things that we need to start working on so that, you know, we can have proposals, plans, ideas in place for, so I don't know if we, maybe it's the subcommittee proposes a, a list of additional subcommittees that might need to be formed based on items that are in the plan. And maybe we bring that as a future agenda item to the environmental commission, or do we review it all together and have proposals? What do you suggest? How do you suggest we proceed, Laura? And then I think Dawn wanted to say something too.
So yes, I, I agree that, yeah, so going back to the kind of first discussion point, yeah, subcommittees usually continue to work as long as, you know, there's substantive work going on. And then, you know, so, so yes, the subcommittee would, would stay in effect. You know, the only caveat I might put on that is if and when we get new commissioners, I'm assuming next month, we might want to open it up to make sure that, you know, everybody has a chance to serve on, on which committee they, they are, subcommittee they're interested in. But yes, I think a, some, you know, basic work plan, I know, I know the cap is a work plan, but it's a, you know, but a subset of the cap work plan would be, would be helpful for the subcommittee to start to flesh out. But other than that, Dawn, go ahead.
Well, I, the only comment that I have is I think, you know, by definition, through the government processes, the subcommittee has to have a specific mission and a a life, if you will, so that they're not in perpetuity. So I agree with all that's been said here is, and I don't mind that we build some general ideas, but perhaps maybe it's subcommittees that are are formed to focus on one additional item or a couple of additional items in the cap or something else that, that we want to make a break between the cap's implementation, if you will, and the cap's development at some point. And I agree with you that, you know, I know Lay is, is termed out and the city council has conducted interviews for replacement or additional commission members. So for replacement or additional commission members so that may afford opportunities for additional commission members to, to get active in various portions of implementing the CAP.
So Bruno, do you feel like you have enough, a little bit of enough direction to come back with something to, to discuss further next meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think we can definitely continue to work as the CAP subcommittee, at least get the ball rolling, and then we can adjust as we go. We definitely need to add subcommittees for specific actions. So I think we're gonna have to see how that shapes up over time. But yes, I think we can get the ball rolling, try to go through these actions, start to see how we prioritize them and how we do it, and then get back to the EC with some ideas.
And I can, I can attend your meeting as, as staff to flush, help you flush out some of the ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I guess one last thing on, on that is several of the actions would probably be something that connects with a different commission, say the Parks and Rec Commission or the Complete Streets. Commit, that's a commission. So maybe when we do propose the subcommittees, I do not know, maybe someone can, can help me understand how we work with other commissions. Is there, is there a formal process for doing that?
We haven't had a huge amount of cross-commission collaboration. I think that there's always the option, and I think would be good for us to, you know, we can always reach out to another commission and say, you know, adoption of the Complete Streets master plan is a huge part of the CAP. The Environmental Commission would like to, you know, either come and attend your meeting. I mean, obviously it's a public meeting, so anybody can attend, but, you know, make a presentation on the CAP to the Complete Streets Commission, you know, request that, you know, to be agendized. Or if there's a specific, you know, anything we wanted to specifically call out to, you know, Parks and Rec or whatever. So we can always, and we, I think should, be doing more of it. Either attend, just attend to listen or to make a public comment or ask to be agendized, you know, for some sort of presentation. So they're aware of what we're doing and we're aware of what they're doing. It's gonna, you know, obviously be much more productive that way. But other than that, I'm not aware of any particular formal collaborative process between commissions. I'm, I'm not sure that, I, I've never seen, I don't, maybe it's possible to have a subcommittee with members of both different commissions, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that was where I was heading in terms of asking if that's an option.
Yeah. Go ahead, Laura.
I was just gonna say, I think you could reach out to the Chair of another commission and you could, you could make a suggestion, you know, whether it's a joint. Yeah, I mean, we do have joint study sessions with, you know, different commissions, like sometimes the Complete Streets and Planning Commission. So it can be done that way, or you could just have a one liaison from Environmental Commission make a, make a presentation. That's fine too. So I think it's, it's doable, but I think as a chair, it'd be good if you reached out first and, and asked, yeah.
So question to you, Laura, actually regarding the Brown Act and how we can do that. For some of these actions, and I can think of one right now that's listed in the 2022 action. Can we set up cross-commission subcommittees? In other words, we have committees, subcommittees of a maximum of three because we have seven members. So when you look at two commissions, assuming that seven plus seven, could you have subcommittees of four or five? That includes two members of another commission, two members of a commission, two members of another one? To talk about, to talk and, and plan a specific action.
I have to check with the attorney just to be sure that that's allowed. So I would check in with them and I'll try to, through Renu, Renu can give you an answer on that one after.
Okay.
And I, you know, even if, yeah, there's always a possibility, you could have a subcommittee. You can even have a bigger subcommittee than, you know, the minor, minority of the county, of commission, you just have to publicly notice it, which is, makes it, you know, harder. But anyway, um, okay. So I think we are, we have our marching orders, I think, on that. And we can move on to our work plan. And this is our opportunity to give updates on any other items on our work plan. And I will just gonna have Xiaoping start and give us an update on, there's been some stuff going on with Lihei, so there's some items to let us know about there. So go ahead, Xiaoping. And you're.
Yeah, I forgot to unmute. So back in February, Joe Semidian held a meeting and have a proposal about the potential of Papi to acquire the Lihei Cement and Stevens Creek Quarry land. And after that, a Papi hearing, there was a vote among all five county supervisors and unanimously they all vote for working towards that plan as a proactive way. And on March, March the second, Joe Semidian held a public meeting. In that meeting, he invited EPA, US Fish and Wildlife, Bay Area Air Quality, Department of Environmental Health, Planning Development Department, Valley Water, and also Cupertino, our Los Altos Council. I know four of them were all present and acknowledged by Joe Semidian. And in that public meeting, he has, has the representative from each of these environmental-related agency and, you know, water monitoring, air quality to report in the past, you know, go back to at least the past two, three years, any kind of violation from either the Lihei cement or the quarry. And so they have found, you know, violations such as nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, mercury, dioxins, and noise. I think the water contamination, at least back in two, three, two, three years ago, there was a concern for the selenium level. And last year, I think their report say that it is, it appeared to be acceptable, but it's a continual monitoring. So I think the, the proposal is that, you know, the county is going to be actively seeking a way to acquire and really put a reclamation plan star, you know, in, you know, they want that to happen. And they particularly quoted the Dumbarton Quarry reconstructions. It, it's a very successful, you know, project and they make a beautiful park from that. They are able to reclaim the land, you know, that was quarry before. So I think that there are, there have been overwhelmingly public support, especially from our city, Cupertino, Los Altos Hills, you know, and, and I think, yeah, Supervisor Semidian is, is working diligently on that.
So just one quick question, where is the money coming from to buy that land?
I think that is the plan that they are working. He doesn't have a specific layout about the finances. But, you know, I think since the, the entire Board of Supervisor vote unanimously towards that goal, I think they're working, you know, to find ways that they can do that. You know, one of the things that he mentioned is, you know, the Lihei cement was given a permit to, for their business operations since 1932. And it has no end date, no expiration day for that permit that they were granted almost, you know, 70 years ago. So I think that, you know, right now, all the neighborhood, you know, I mean, it's a dense residential area. It's not like 80, you know, some years ago. So there is urgency, you know, for various these kind of, you know, air pollution, noise, pollution, water. And we want to reclaim those land that have been mined in the last 70 some years. Yeah, so I think there is no specific talk, discussion yet about, you know, where the funds is coming from. I think we will, you know, probably hear more updates from them.
So, yeah, I mean, and this is a very preliminary, this is a process that would take a very long time to purchase and do the reclamation and all that. So this is, you know, it's in the very infant stages of it. So, but I think it's, it's promising that this is a direction it could go. And what, what the land would be then repurposed for is, is, you know, I'm sure would be subject of a lot of discussion. So are there any other questions about the update on Lihei?
No, I mean, I'm just, you know, that's great that they're doing it. I'm just wondering what other options were explored, like for example, limiting the lease, not making it indefinite lease, but amending it so that it's renewed on the, every 10 years or whatever, under specific guidelines. You know, the, I mean, I, I don't know what else was explored, right? It's just, it's not, it's a very good idea, but I think, I think, you know, I was wondering if there were other issues that surfaced that made the, the Santa Clara Supervisors decide to do this, which I'm sure will cost quite a bit of money to the, to local residents because they can have to raise that amount of money to be able to convince Lihei to sell the land.
Well, one of the things, someone was going to say something.
No, I think it's just a.
Okay. Um, one of the things that Joe Semidian has mentioned was, you know, Lihei is owned by Kaiser Permanente, I think it's a permanente business anyway. I think they own several of these kind of businesses around US. They actually, in the past, they have sold, at least I think the last 10 years, they have sold a couple of their operations already. So Lihei not yet. So there may be, you know, some reason there. There's another, another thing is Lihei actually was applying to expand their operation. And because they have to, you know, really, you know, starting having a definitive timeline how they do the reclamation. So I think the county and the Midpan Open Space right now is reviewing and hold that expansion application pending on their action for reclamation. So I think that, you know, these kind of things, you know, they want to expand, they want to mine more. It's not going to stop. At least, I think, you know, for the next decade, for the, another 10 years. So I think that is kind of give us an urgency of the timing that they really want to tackle that right now proactively.
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of an inflection point, you know, which Xiaoping is saying is, you know, they're trying to, bring down the ridgeline and really expand operations. And, and I think it wasn't that there was a negotiation, but I think supervisors were taking this as just a completely different path as opposed to do, going the, you know, negotiation and regulation path with Lihei, who has not been a, not been a responsible corporate actor and has had so many violations and now, and has, you know, done things outside of their permit. So I think it was just, you know, a completely separate path, given, given that and given that there's really divergence of what, what the residents want and what the company seems to be pursuing, so.
One other thing, Laura, I wanted to ask you, and also with Council Fager. I know that the council has a committee, you know, for the Lihei and Stevens Creek Quarry. So I was asked the questions, what I plan to do at Environmental Commission, particularly for this area. And so it seems that there may be some duplicates of the effort because the council is also actively, because my answer for them is that I would continue to monitor and, and collect information about violations across, you know, I was mentioning earlier, you know, the air, the water, you know, the, the EPA, Environmental Health. But the council say that they are also doing that as well. They also plan to, you know, continue monitoring that. So I think my question is that, do I need to continue, you know, serve in the commission for that particularly matter? I just don't want us to do something that, that may duplicate what they plan to do.
So originally, my understanding was that the, the council wanted to have a subcommittee of the commission to be monitoring this, not to duplicate, but to be so that there's a cross-communication between what the council is learning and knowing about it as well. And, and the commission is also understanding what's going on and can provide a resource if there, at some point is, you know, some technical or, or other issue that we want to research and provide information to the council. I don't see it as, you know, duplicating efforts, but just that everybody is on the same page. I mean, I would certainly defer to council, they said, you know, we're, we're taking it on a, on a, on a different path. You know, it's going, it's not a environmental or technical path now, it's a land use path, so you don't need to worry about it. So Councilmember Fagor, I think, has something to add.
No, Laura, you said it well, and I agree with you. I think there's still value in having Xiaoping continuing her role. I think the question that came up in the interview when she, she interviewed for the commission just was to better understand her role. But even just listening to her report, it was so extensive and well-done, Xiaoping. I mean, seriously, you did a great job. Um, it was so extensive and well done, Xiaoping. I mean, seriously, you did a great job like covering all the topics that Joe covered in his meeting. I think there's so much value in having your own commissioner in this role. Because what's key here is, and with all due respect to my friends and colleagues, Sally and Lynette, you are the environmental experts, and so you may hear something at that meeting that you bring to your commission and say, we want council to focus on this, or we want council to be aware of this. And so that's why it's good having someone from the Environmental Commission involved, notwithstanding the uh council subcommittee.
Okay, sounds good.
And thank you, Xiaoping, for doing that and wrestling. This is a very complex issue, so we appreciate you digesting all that information.
Thank you.
Um, are there any other work plan items?
Well, I I'd add one comment at that is if there are any commissioners that are interested, I suggest they listen to Joe's uh last last presentation of the panel of experts, if you will, that really control the permitting for the the uh quarry. Um, it's informative. Um, it answers, Bruno, it's a one way, you know, if you have an interest in getting up to speed, but it has to do with, a lot of it is very legal in nature about them having vested mining rights, but they have to abide by uh permits for the mining and so on. Um, and I'll add one comment that it's my understanding from that meeting that the uh the cement plant has not operated for eighteen to twenty-four months. Um, it's been mothballed essentially uh during this time, so uh, if and when it gets going again, and they have applied for a new permit for additional mining, and and I think a lot of the the feasibility, the the organization is evaluating whether or not they can continue uh with their with their business there. So there's evaluations and then the exploratory investig- I call it exploratory investigation is that what are the what what potential future can be that that the uh that the uh commissioner, the the county supervisors authorized basically a an inquiry as to future use or say.
The reason why, I'm sorry. The the reason why it hasn't been in use for eighteen more eighteen to twenty-four months is because of COVID nineteen, or is that for another reason?
Um, what I have sounds like there's some sort of echo there. Um, what I have learned is that there were some detective leaks in the Kilns before, prior to uh they're not operating, they kind of closed it, the operation. So there were some leak that probably happened two and a half years ago. There was some report. Uh, the other thing is also, yes, because of the COVID nineteen, uh, you know, all the shutdown. You know, many businesses are put on hold, maybe delayed. So uh the demand for the cement has decreased. And I think they have both business reasons and also operation uh possibly hazard hazard reasons that they need to contain and fix.
Don, I was gonna ask you, you referenced um the uh recording. Is there a recording of the meeting? Because when I tried to find it, I couldn't.
I believe I believe there is.
I can share, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
I'll add one comment, though, and I I think it was clear at the meeting that um any notices of of violation and or anything that had been served by the county or other agencies to the operations, to Lehigh's operations, they've all been cleared. I think that was clear at the meeting. So they could operate. There's nothing in my way is that you know, if they don't, they don't have any no unclear notices of violation, they can operate.
Um, they can operate, but doesn't mean there is no pollution. I think it's a matter of, um, you know, there's a acceptable level, um, but I I think unless it's a continuous measure, you know, sometimes it could escape. You know, I think that I I need to dig a little bit more, you know, like you know, we we've known, you know, they have nitrogen oxide, you know, sofa dioxide and stuff like that. Um, I was gonna say something, Laura. I do have the puppy meeting uh link I can provide you after the meeting.
Can you send that to Renew so she can distribute it to the entire commission?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, yeah, because trying to, like I said, it's a very complex issue that, you know, we could spend the next three hours talking about. Okay, um, so any other work plan items? I mean, not that that what that's not enough. Okay, and city staff updates?
So I want to provide information on a lithium ion battery recycling driver donation service, uh, which is going to happen on March nineteenth at the Almond Elementary School, five fifty Almond Avenue, Los Altos. And people can bring their cell phones, laptops, tablets, toothbrushes, electric toothbrushes, wireless headphones, power tool battery, and a lot of other items to this uh donation service. There is more information on the website, which is the Lithium Ion Battery Recycling S V dot com.
And I would add that um the flyer, thank you, Renew, I would add that the flyer for the event is is in the packet. And I would encourage you, if you have um lift serves or whatever else, to um send that out to. We all know that lithium is a very important um part of batteries, and and this is one of the key issues that we need to um, you know, we broadly as a society need to figure out how to have enough lithium to have to have batteries for electric vehicles and everything. So um this type of recycling is going to be super important. Um, so, yeah, get the word out. Okay, thank you, Renew. Any anything else staff wise?
Oh, and now at this point, I look forward to working with the subcommittees to uh kind of channel uh the discussion and learn what their priorities are also, so that the we can bring it to the commission for further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add one quick thing, um, is that, um, you know, in terms of vacancies within our department, so the director position, obviously, I'm interim, um, but they are doing interviews, so it's possible that position uh might be filled in April or May, so we're we're waiting to see about that. And then um, we have another position that uh the city manager wanted to move ahead with uh recruiting for before we move on to the sustainability coordinator. So um, so we have a couple of positions and then, um, so I'm hoping that, you know, by April, we can, you know, start to look at recruiting for the position, but that's that's as much as I can tell you right now, so, but I'll let you know. I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. We will uh cross our fingers. Okay, I'm gonna move on to uh commissioner updates and um we'll just call out, there's a Green at Home workshop put on by Actara for heat pump hot water heaters coming up on April thirteenth. I think it's at six P M. Yeah, so you can find out information about that at actara.org, so. I think they're usually pretty hands-on informational workshops about how to switch over to heat pump appliances, so.
Laura, can I ask a question about that? I think it's a it's a very good uh it, I mean, I don't, it maybe it 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 would be very useful to be able to share that with the community at large, and I'm not sure if there is a way to do it. Um, you know, part of what, you know, the one of the actions that I was talking about, it's about the energy audits and all that stuff, but that's kind of linked to it is, you know, being able to know where to go if you want to replace your gas appliance. Um, and that would be one step in that right in that direction, which we to go to the webinar, the can can we? And it's a question for Ranu maybe or for Laura. Is there a way we can advertise this to the community at at large? Whether it's um emails or I don't know exactly what the process would be and what we are allowed to do, but.
So, sorry, I'll just say one thing and I'll get over to you, Renew. Um, in the past, we have been able to put items in the city manager weekly update. I don't know if I would necessarily, you know, choose this one as the best one, because, you know, they also do a lot of EV workshops and uh, you know, there's there's a lot going on, so we might wanna, um, I don't know. Anyway, we 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 might want to think about which one we want to promote. And we do have the commission webpage, you know, which one avenue to start working on um the cap items, if we wanted to look at, you know, being more of an information resource, would be to start pulling different, you know, uh informational items into that onto that webpage. Again, I think we need to be thoughtful about whether that's the right way to go about it.
There are usually a city manager updates. Yeah, I think that would be, I I, you know, I I don't know percentage of people subscribe to that. But uh I I usually get them, I think it's a Friday, it comes in every Friday. Um, that's helpful. Uh, you know, we we know uh what is, you know, what will be held at a city as far as event wise.
I mean, yeah, I I don't know if that's something that would be an agenda item, something we should discuss, and I'm not sure what the process would be, but I think especially in light of the cap, in light of the reach codes. I think educating, having a system in place to be able to provide information to the community, uh to educate residents about green living, if I if I I want to use a catchphrase in some ways, but in other words, giving them the information to be able, for them to be able to make the right choice. And and I don't think we set up to do that right now. I think unless you're looking for something specific, you're not going to find, I mean, you're not going to find it, you're not going to think about it. Um, and I just don't know how to do it. I just putting putting it out there for us to think about, to see there are ways we can formalize communication.
And that's and and that, not to go back to an old agenda item, but that's what I would encourage the subcommittee to think about is that there's a lot of information out there, you know, you can go to S V C E and find out what rebates are available for, you know, your heat pump or whatever. You can go to Actara and find out how, you know, how you can make your EV of next EV affordable. So instead of recreating that, how do we, you know, how would the commission, how would the city become a trusted resource for its residents who are looking for that kind of information and who don't want to go to five different places to get it? But what is it that we as a commissioner or the city can do to, you know, make that accessible and disseminate it better to our residents?
So this is an option to possibly explore further. I don't know if the city does that right now or not, but there are opportunities probably for doing email blasts to uh people who have subscribed to certain lists and put all the links that uh we have resources on within that email blasts with introduction, so uh they have better information, the community members. So that's a possibility that can be explored. I don't know if it is something that the city already does. I'm gonna have to find out, and if the commission is interested in that kind of an option, I can explore that further.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, um, perhaps, I think, um maybe if that's something we want to pursue, um, we can look into that later again. Aside from the city manager update, I'm not sure that there's there are other avenues, but um, I I do think we need to be thinking um a little bit beyond emails and and what added value that the city can bring. I mean, I think it become, it comes down to really becoming a trusted source in being a little bit more uh hands-on in some way, so I don't want to belabor it because we're in on a different agenda item, but.
Okay, I I have a, just a thought, like, how about um if any uh any possibility to work with Miss Mission Trail uh publications? I think they do have handout um monthly or every other month, some kind of um brochure or uh some things and um since they are contracted with our city, I'm sure, I guess, they're coverage to other cities, but somehow if they are willing to every time give a session, say, you know, City of Los Altos, or maybe a few other cities that just different kind of um key um highlights of what what's available, like any kind of issue that um the E C may want to get 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 it out to the citizens, so maybe there's a common interest, so perhaps that's not a additional kind of um saying that push out to everybody, but it is there already.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other um commissioner updates?
Um, I'd like to um call attention to upcoming event, and uh that's being put on by Actara on Friday. And it uh it's Climate Action Building Community for Electrification. And there's a cup, there's a, there's an individual speaking on home electrification and one speaking on twenty twenty-two reach codes. And uh then there's gonna be an opportunity for the attendees to coordinate or to get together for local actions and initiatives uh to talk with other ones. And that's, so that's Friday, the eighteenth, and I, let's see, I'm looking for the time right now. It's uh noon to one. And I don't know if it's time for other reports, but I did, I was assigned to attend the February twenty-second council meeting, and there's really nothing to report on that council meeting regarding environmental related issues. And Bruno and I and Rashina and I think others were also at the meeting um on the eighth where the climate action plan was discussed and approved by the council. I don't know, I don't believe there was anything else at that council meeting that you know, rose to the level that I would say reporting on um environmental issues. Maybe Bruno or Rashina has something to add there.
No, I I don't recall uh anything other than the cap really that was substantial for us and whatever for us. I mean, the only thing I would say probably about that council meeting is that there was a discussion around the new police building. So I think um as the city is planning to build um new facilities, I think we need to make sure it's done within the framework of the cap um in terms of the standards that are going to be used for that new building, and that's accounted for in the budget. Uh, that's the only comment I would make, which uh comes from that particular meeting, I think.
There was one um that may my hearing an echo, just me?
Yeah, maybe if everyone else who's not speaking can mute, then maybe that'll work.
Council, uh either at the next meeting or the meeting after, uh, I think plans to discuss um something to do with uh city trees. Um, so I don't know the scope of that uh discussion that uh uh is planned, but that may be of interest to some of us.
Yeah, my understanding is Yeah, my understanding is tree canopy, my understanding is that like a tree canopy inventory, is that, you know, assessment of how the tree canopy, the health and.
Since putting together, one of the actions in the cap was to set up was to propose for the city to set up an urban tree development plan. That may be of interest to us, and I don't know, or maybe Anisa could tell us more about what the extent of that discussion is.
Happy to, Rashina. So what's being agendized is a discussion on whether or not council wants staff to work on a tree canopy policy?
Thank you.
So I think it might link to what we had in the cap, and it's not necessarily something that we necessarily need to prioritize now, but I think, as Rashina mentioned, we have, one of the actions in the cap is to put together a Nomad Forest Master Plan. Because, so it starts with a tree inventory and figuring out how we can green the city further, and add not just trees, but also plants, green space, plants, green spaces, and so on. So I don't know exactly what the council is planning to do and direct staff to do, but I think that we, maybe that's something that the council may want to keep in mind, is that I think we need to go to that extra step at some point to say, this is what we have, this is what we can do, and really put together a plan, like some other cities have done, like Palo Alto in particular, and that's something we don't have in Los Altos.
And just to add to that, Bruno, you're correct, if there is support on council to move forward with developing a tree canopy policy because of the subject matter, we would most likely direct staff to first work with the Environmental Commission before bringing anything to us. So you will have an opportunity to give these suggestions and suggest benchmarking what other cities have done. So, yes, if there's support to move forward, the normal process is to have staff work with you guys.
But this brings up a good point. I don't think we have scheduled representatives for the upcoming council meetings. And I should have asked Renew to put that on the agenda. So I don't have the dates, I'm assuming there's one on the twenty-second?
There is, and the agenda just came out today, Laura.
Okay, so do we have anybody, any volunteers to attend that or listen to that recording? I can do it, then. I will do. And then I'm assuming there would be another one on the fifth, which will be also before our next meeting, so.
It's actually the twelfth, Laura, April.
Okay. So if we have a volunteer for that one, we can fill those two in and then fill out the rest of them at the next meeting. Anybody want to listen on the twelfth? And again, you can listen to the recording. You don't have to stay up till midnight.
I was trying to unmute myself. Can you hear me? I was trying to unmute myself, so. Yeah, I can do the twelfth if you want.
Thank you. So we have those two for now, and then I will hopefully remember, make sure we can, we have a schedule to keep going forward. And then I will just make a note that future agenda item will be that we need to start to compile our list of accomplishments from this past year and work plan for next year for our committee, joint meeting with the council in May, I believe, so, yeah, on May third. So that, that's another work plan item that we, we need to remember. Okay, with that, any other agenda, future agenda items, I hesitate to ask, because I think we've got enough going on. Okay, so with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Laura, before you do that, I think we should all recognize Lei for her service, because this is her last meeting.
You were right.
She's turned out.
Thank you, everyone. From Laura and Xiaoping and everyone. It's nice working with you. I learned a lot from you.
How many years?
I miss you. Actually, I have been on this committee for nine years. There was an extra year for the first term, so this is my second term.
Congratulations, great. You turned out to all commissions or just this one?
This is the first one, the only one, and.
No, I think it's to this one. I think, yeah, I think she can.
You can move on to another one, right?
Yeah, I, yeah. Learned a lot, and we see everyone, great work.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.